I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing by the Committee on Education and Public Libraries. We're here for two things that are on agenda. By the way, Happy New Year, it is January 5th, 2012. And we're here to hear the appointment of Dr. John Camacho Salis to serve as the Chairperson of the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification. And then we have a Bill Number 392-31 introduced by Dr. Guthertz, an act to add a new Chapter 14 to Title 17 GCA Division 2 Guam Department of Education entitled Restrictions on Dangerous Weapons. So what we'll do, of course, is start off with the appointment of Dr. John Salis. And we have two individuals that are signed in to testify on his behalf. And if I could ask the two of you to come up, that's Lea Santos and former Senator Casper Bauer. While you're working your way up here to the table, I'd like to also thank my colleagues for joining me this afternoon. And to my very far right is the Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz, Senator Guthertz. To my left is Senator Palacios, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Alenia Mishita. Thank you for joining me this afternoon. And if there's anyone else who are interested in testifying either for Dr. John Salis or on Bill 392, you're welcome to approach the table to my left and sign in. If there's anyone who would like to submit testimony later on, written testimony through email, you can send it to speaker@judiwanpad.com. You can fax it to my office at 472-3589. Or you can mail it to 155 Hessler Street in Gania. Or the last is that you can drop it off at the mailroom here at the Legislative Building. So those of you who are testifying, we're asking if for you to turn on the mic. And if you see the red light that turns on, that means, you know, it's on. And that is a very powerful mic, so you do not need to get it really close to you because you would muffle, of course, the sound. And we would have a difficult time understanding your testimony. And lastly, I'd like to recognize, of course, I understand that we do have students here from Senator Guthertz's class. So welcome to the legislature. If you want to testify, you're more than welcome to testify as well. Or you can send in written testimony. We do have a third person as well who would like to testify on Dr. Salis's appointment. And that is Mr. Scamby. Welcome, so you join us in the table then. So we'll go ahead and hear testimonies from the three of you before we call up, you know, Dr. Salis. So, Lea, we'll start with you.
Good afternoon, Senator Speaker, Senator Cruz, Guthertz, Palacios, Ada, and Mishita. My name is Lea Santos and the Executive Director of the Guam Commission for Educated Certification. I support the appointment of Dr. John Camacho Salis as the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification Chairperson. Former Senator John Salis's educational achievement and diverse work experience provides him with a variety of skill sets that is definitely unique and valuable to the council. As a former Guam Community College Provost and University of Guam President, Dr. John is a definite asset. I believe he will provide the vision and the leadership needed to move the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lea. Dr. Casper Bauer, former Senator Casper Bauer?
Senator Massey, Speaker. Welcome, Happy New Years to all the senators. And I hope you have a very good year for the people of Guam. I'm very delighted and I'm Larry Casper Bauer here as a private citizen, I guess, and former colleague of Senator Salis. And I guess also as a member of the Commission on Guam Commission on Education Certification, Educator Certification. And I mention that role because our agency has the responsibility to provide administrative support for this particular council. I might add, for which we don't have a secretary of our own, another topic. I have just a brief written testimony and I'll kind of summarize that since Lea had mentioned some of Senator John's past history. And I say in here, it would seem that no one could be better qualified for this position than Senator John Salis. With his tenure and background as the Provost of the Community College, the Associate Superintendent of DOE, the President of the University, Vice Chair of the Committee on Education here in the legislature for several terms, plus his numerous, numerous, very substantial community service with the leadership roles, not only on Guam but in the region with the J.C., past member of the Rotary Club of Guam and others. He's held so many, I just can't think of anybody who would be better qualified. When Lea and I were discussing the possibility of perhaps suggesting some names to the governor for this position, the first and only name that came to my mind was Senator John Salis. And so it's, as I conclude my written testimony and this testimony is, I support this nomination without any reservations whatsoever. And I hope that you'll be able to take his nomination up and act favorably on it at your next session so that this commission or this council, which I understand hasn't been operating for the past year, could get in gear. Dr. Salis has had a long interest in and concern about the foreign institutions and institutions from the states of higher ed who come into Guam, get a $10, $20 business license, and they're in operation. And sometimes we have to be very concerned about not only the competition, where competition can be good, but are their programs really adequate? It always troubles me, Speaker and senators, how these institutions can come in to our island, set up shop, offer degrees without any library. While we at the University of Guam have to have a very extensive complete set of library holdings to meet accreditation standards. And yet they somehow do it on their $25 Guam business license. And either we don't know something or we need to really look into this. And I'm very, very confident that Senator Salis, not only as a member of the council but as Chairman of the council, will be able to look into this and really do good for us and all of our island. Senator Massey?
Thank you very much, Dr. Casper Bauer. Mr. Scamblerie?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker, into this august body. I come before you at least six paragraphs in support of Dr. John Camacho Salis. I've worked with them since 1980 until I finally retired. But he and I have spoken about this particular issue, about this particular problem for years. And short of saying any names, I remember the incident with Dr. Nidod. That was quite an embarrassment for me at the time I was with the GCC. And hopefully that with establishment of this office, that it will not be repeated. And that's the reason why I've decided that it's time that we get a COP on education. And that individual would have to be Dr. John Salis. So I do have a written testimony, I need six paragraphs, pretty short. Dear Madam, the purpose of this letter is to submit an endorsement with enthusiasm for John Camacho Salis for confirmation as Chairman of the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification. The undersign has known the candidate since 1980 and has enjoyed our relationship with respect and tandem with professional credentials and is a former member of the Guam Legislature. Dr. Salis enjoyed being on the skyline with impressive positions, to name a few. Deputy Director for Guam DOE, the Provost of the Guam Community College, President of the University of Guam, a tenured professor at UOG, Chairman of the GCC Board of Trustees, and Chairman of the Guam Joint Boards of Education, and appointed member of all governing college boards in Micronesia. And I might add that rounding out this professional private career as the Vice President of Human Resources for Duty-Free Shoppers Limited Partnership, and now operates his own small business consulting firm doing business throughout Micronesia. That's Dr. Salis. And so today I appear before you, you, the august body, to submit my encouragement and to cite that with the concurrence of the Guam Legislature to enable Dr. Salis to bring a closer partnership between the private and the public sectors in our community for the benefit of our future citizens. This partnership will be expected to make a Guam education credential not only more beneficial but also more prestigious. This is an issue John Salis and I have long dreamed, dreamed about, and your confirmation will bring that reality closer for all of us. It will be considered an important tool in the process of providing a substantial and adequate education for our island community. We agreed further that the need for private commercial educational services will bring healthy competition to and by enhancing the quality in our local tax-supported institution. Lastly, the contribution of educational institution is needed for the growth of our island as a progressive community. This can be best achieved by protecting the integrity of degrees and diplomas issued by island institution through an evaluation of minimum education requirements consistent with an established curriculum adopted public certification process. Now, the key to this program for its success is to ensure consistent enforcement to prohibit the granting of false or misleading educational credential, misleading literature, advertising, solicitation, or representation by post-secondary institution or their agents. The individual and professional education COP to carry these credentials and enforce the program is here today in this room known as Dr. John Salis. I sincerely hope that this committee will be kind enough to make sure that he gets the approval to be the next education COP for Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members have any questions? None? I'd like to also welcome Senator Monizier Retire for joining us this afternoon. So you're free now to leave. And I'm going to ask then the nominee, Dr. John Salis, to please come forward and provide your testimony.
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think you all may just get up to the table.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and members of the committee. My name is John Salis and I'm the Chairperson Select for the Council on Post-Secondary Education Institution Certification. I got written testimony today and I think it's been handed out by the staff. I just want to highlight some of the points. I think number one, and as Scamby has pointed out, it's been very difficult sitting here listening to three people who I've known a long time speak nice things about you because I'm not accustomed to that. You know, I didn't pay them, I didn't ask them to do this. But it's a matter of, I guess, your history going before you. And I think that the reputation that I've got as a chief executive of three educational institutions in Guam, frequently the Acting Director of Education for DOE when I was deputy, and then the first president or what is now what is the Provost for Guam Community College, and then the seventh president of the University of Guam. Now, these were not political positions. These are positions that I earned on merit. And I think that I was able to get them. And thanks to many of you on the bench, I was able to do those things with your support. What is important for me, what has always been important for me, is that in the '70s when GCC was started, there were 21 institutions operating on this island. 21 institutions. Now fortunately, only one of them were commercial institutions operating in the civilian community. The other 20 were military organizations dealing with the bases. And not just the bases on Guam, they were operating from Guam, dealing with the bases in the Orient. Now, what is important there is that this relationship said, we are from Guam. We are American education, we are U.S. education. But who's going to get blamed? Not the military, not these institutions, it's us, Guam, the island of Guam. And I think that's extremely critical that we be able to safeguard that reputation. Second is that we have an educational system that is public and that is provided by public law. And the government of Guam and yourselves included means that we are all here trying to make this island education system a quality and one with high integrity. It's very difficult sometimes because of budgetary problems and other problems that come up during the course of the year. But the point is, is that this educational system has a reputation. And it is one that we are continually striving to get with high integrity and quality. I think we should ask the same thing of private institutions that operate on this island. And the only way we can do that, as I look at the law, is to establish the set of rules that are necessary to regulate that. I don't agree that we should overburden private institutions because I'm an advocate of private enterprise. And I don't think that we should overburden them with a set of rules that are bureaucratic and time-consuming or expense-consuming. But I think we need to be able to set the standards against which they will be judged. And then when it's done, have them operate and to have them be judged accordingly and consistently. That's the key. We have to be, we have to have a will to be able to do this. And just as we have in any enterprise that is involved in on this island, we have to be prepared to enforce certain rules, whether they be desirable, unlikable, or unpopular. I'm fortunate that I'm now a retiree and I have no political aspirations anymore. I don't have any intentions to do anything but other than help my island. So that is the purpose that I, that is the reason that I accepted the governor's nomination. And it's a purpose that I'm appearing before you because I'm willing to devote my time and my effort and my talents to the improvement of this one phase of life on Guam. And it just reminds me that at one time, there was a phrase that was going around, "There is life other than government on Guam." And I intend to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Salis. I'd like to go ahead and open it up then for questions. Vice Speaker?
Having you sit there, it makes it very painful because it reminds me that it was 35 years ago that I was in the discussion as legal counsel to Governor Bernalio that we were discussing your returning to Guam as Provost for the GCC. And when I look out at these young faces, I just want to crawl under the table. 35 years ago. But I'm glad to see that you're willing to continue to serve and you have my support.
Thank you, Vice Speaker.
Senator Guthertz?
At first, I'd like to say it's certainly a great honor for me to see Dr. Salis as a nominee for confirmation for this very important civic position because it's an uncompensated relief position. It's a labor of love. And I'm also very honored that our former Senator Larry Casper Bauer has come to testify on her behalf and also our former Chief of Police, Mr. Scamblerie. Dr. Salis, you have a tremendous resume of performance as the former Provost of the Guam Community College, the first Provost of the Guam Community College, and as President, a former President of the University of Guam. That is how I really know you. And also as a former colleague at the university, at the School of Business and Public Administration. You, with the support of Chief Scamblerie, really pioneered GCC and brought it from a fledgling institution to an institution that boldly met the requirements of the sunset provision of its enabling legislation. I'm sure you recall that when the legislature passed the law to establish the Guam Community College as an independent institution of learning, that it included a sunset provision and required Guam Community College to justify its existence on the 10th year of its creation in order to continue. And I attended the legislative hearing then, not as a member of the legislature but just as an interested educator, when you testified before the legislature with your competent staff and explained the progress that Guam Community College made over that 10-year period. And the legislature at that time unanimously endorsed and removed the sunset provision from your enabling legislation. I think it's very important for the people of Guam to remember that and particularly for these young students here to know that, that you brought GCC to a level of recognition, not just here but in the region. And you provided the impetus for all those that followed you as Provost, including our President today of Guam Community College, Dr. Mary Okada, who's here today as well. I have a couple of questions to ask you with reference to your role upon your confirmation by the legislature in this new position. You know, in some jurisdictions, including the Northern Marianas, they have legislation in place that basically says institutions from outside the island have to meet certain specific criteria to be able to set up shop and operate in the Northern Marianas, higher education institutions. One of the provisions says that if the host institution, in this case, it's Northern Maryas Community College, offers a particular degree program, then an institution that comes from abroad, including the U.S. mainland, into the Northern Marianas that wishes to establish itself, may not replicate that program. What is your thinking about that? Do you think that's something that we should have here in our community?
The short answer, Senator, is no. And the reason for it is I was the advocate of that particular phase in the Northern Marianas legislation. Because at that time, the Northern Marianas Legislature, as it became a Commonwealth, did not want to see other businesses compete with their own educational institution. They had different plans for it. I had offered to bring GCC to the Northern Marianas through my chairman. And we were rebuffed at that time because they wanted to establish their own institution, which is right. In our particular case, the reason that we should keep this kind of clause out of our legislation is because we need the competition. You cannot expect that GCC or UOG should be the only, the sole providers of higher education. I think that there are many more opportunities. We deal with a much greater, wider, diverse population. And I just want to remind you, you know, you pointed out the students that are here. These are your students, right? These students, as I looked at them, represented the average age of the individuals that were first employed at GCC. They were homegrown products. They were qualified, quality people who were rejected by everybody else. But I took a chance on them and I hired them. And we just celebrated the 33rd anniversary the other day. And one of them is retiring this Saturday. After 35 years of service, this is Speaker, this is Lou Gotista. And you know, when you looked at those people, I knew them when they were young and then they became skilled professionals because of the quality of the educational system. But it was not because of the qualities just solely, it was because of the will that we had to do it. We wanted to see a quality institution. We made a quality institution against all competitors. And we should be allowed to compete, not to close ourselves off and allow it to be sole source. Thank you.
I just want to say I agree with you totally. I'm very pleased with your response. I think Guam has come of age and we're sophisticated enough to be able to compete with any institution. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Just one point, Madam Speaker, Senator. The 2010 census showed, documented that the territory of Guam is the largest and the most, the best educated in its population outside of the state of Hawaii. That means that we have the highest number of college graduates, high school diplomas, college graduates, and doctorate degree holders. That's an indication of the performance that we've done. Why should we cut that off at the beginning? And why should we stand with our heads bowed when other competitors join us? We can stand two of them. We have arrived. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Senator.
No questions. Just thank you for stepping up again and contributing yourself, your services to the people of Guam. Our families go way back and you go way back with my dad. It's always been an honor to always see him light up whenever, you know, you two talk. You have my full support.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'm pleased, I'm very honored to call you Senator. I just knew him when he was a kid.
Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Dr. Salis. He's still a kid. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I'm very happy to hear your thoughts on competition, on the idea that the Guam people are competitive. We hold our own, we do extremely well. We have a lot to be proud of.
Yes, we do.
And I think more and more, we need to proclaim that because sometimes we allow people to put us down and to keep us down, and that's absolutely wrong. We are good. We can be better, but we are good.
It's not a matter of race, Senator. It's not a matter of genetics. It's not a matter of gender. It's a matter of people.
That's right.
And the people that are in this room are an example of that.
That's right.
And I think that we should stand and become it.
Thank you. And so I wish you the best of luck and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator DePachio.
Senator Monizier?
I just want to echo my sentiment that, thank you for your service and you also have my support.
Thank you, Senator Zell.
Thank you. Well, I have to put out a disclaimer that he was actually my boss at one time, he had hired me at GCC. But he had also tasked me with a study about, remember, the Student Affairs Office?
Exactly.
And my recommendation to Dr. Salis then was to delete my position. So I found myself without a job, but not because of his doing.
And as you remember, Madam Speaker, you were one of those young people that somebody forgot and somebody didn't want around because of whatever reason.
Exactly. I remember that.
And we gave it, we took a chance and look what you became. I'm talking to you now on the other side of the table.
And, you know, I always look, by the way, in page nine of all candidates that come before the legislature. And the reason why I say that is because others have testified to your qualifications. But I think what's really important for people to know is the person more than just the paper qualifications, work experience, and all that. And I have to say, of course, in testimony to your credentials as well is that the question is, what do you feel are your outstanding strengths? And you listed managing and directing people. And you've absolutely, you know, done that during my tenure at the college. And you were very proactive in terms of your tenure at the college, and you were very proactive in terms of your vision, and you wanted to see results. And you did just that as well, by actually responding to the needs of the community in which the college actually serves. And you did that with the Trades Program and working with the Contractors Association. So all those definitely are qualities, I think, that people really need to know about you. And, you know, of course, like my other colleagues, I do not have any qualms at all in saying that we thank you for stepping up to the plate and wanting to serve when we know that this is a non-paying position. We also thank the Governor for recognizing you and appointing you. And I would like to also say that you do have my support as well for your confirmation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, then, no other last comments? I want to thank you very much for coming in this afternoon and everybody else who came to testify on your behalf.
Mrs. Wossen, thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
I'd like to also recognize and thank you for joining us, Senator Sam Abini. The second item on the agenda this afternoon is Bill, where's my list here? Okay, Bill Number 392-31, which is introduced by Senator Guthertz, and is an act to add a new Chapter 14 to Title 17 GCA, Division 2 Guam Department of Education, entitled Restrictions on Dangerous Weapons. And so from before, of course, I asked the Senator to briefly describe what the bill is about. I'd just like to also just make an announcement that Senator Palacios, who chairs the Committee on Public Safety, and then myself as the Chairperson of Education, is that we jointly called for a roundtable meeting to actually address bullying and the safety of our children in our schools. And we had invited GPD, DOE, the courts actually also came. And that was the first time in that meeting that the actual announcement was made about SROs, now they're being hired through a grant, the consolidated grant, that was awarded to the courts. And so, and everyone was, that was the first that we've heard of this. Senator Yamashita was also present, and Senator Tony Hadda also was present at that roundtable meeting. And there were other issues that were brought up, other recommendations that were brought up by GPD other than the SROs. And we were, we had, we knew that the holidays were coming up, so we decided to not call for a follow-up in the meeting. And because of this topic and because of this bill, that this then is the starting point again in which this issue should continue to be discussed. And that Senator Palacios also has agreed that we will be holding these joint roundtable meetings as well. And at the same time, I have also received a letter from one of our colleagues, Senator Duñez, who would like to see this roundtable meeting as well continue. So with that, then, I will ask the author to just briefly describe her intention with Bill Number 392. Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and good afternoon to everyone here at the hearing room. Madam Speaker, Bill 392-31 is an act to add a new Chapter 14 to Title 17 Guam Code Annotated, Division 2 Guam Department of Education, entitled Restrictions on Dangerous Weapons. I introduce this measure in order to establish and create community discussion regarding a plan that was not widely known by the public to establish a new category of personnel attached to the judiciary of Guam and trained as probation officers to come into the public school system, I understand particularly the high schools, to be known as school resource officers, and to be in a uniform of a probation officer and to carry firearms on school campuses during school hours. While I am in favor of almost anything to improve security in our schools, I have many questions about the process regarding the decision to arm the school resource officers with loaded handguns during the course of their daily work during school hours at public The Department of Education, through the various boards of education, have had a board policy in place for many years which prohibits deadly weapons on school campuses. These are the public schools of Guam, unless law enforcement officers are called in to respond to emergencies. In my view, as a former Board of Education member and the board member that authored that board policy to prohibit deadly weapons in our public schools, and also as a former Director of Public Safety, I believe, Madam Speaker, that this approach may not be a wise approach in the interests of our children and our school community. Bill 392 would place restrictions on dangerous weapons. In fact, the measure states that firearms, openly worn or concealed, this includes guns, and also contrabands and other deadly and destructive weapons, shall be prohibited on all Guam Department of Education, school campuses, and educational facilities. My initial hope was that through the introduction of this bill, discussions would occur particularly at the level of the Education Board with the stakeholders of our school system to give them an opportunity to express their views on this plan. I know the bill did get a lot of attention and did spark a lot of discussion, which was absent when this plan was developed, but not necessarily publicly disseminated or shared with the community. Basically, what I'm saying is parents, school employees, staff, teachers, even administrators should have been given a real opportunity to present their perspectives regarding this plan. And the public at large should have had an opportunity to testify at perhaps Board of Education meetings or special meetings of the board to be able to discuss this plan. I'm specifically addressing the issue of weapons on campuses. This measure I've introduced, Bill 392, will prohibit the Guam Department of Education, employees, personnel, administrative personnel, teachers, staff, students, security personnel, truant officers, school resource officers, visitors, and all other persons from bringing, displaying, wearing, possessing deadly weapons, openly worn or concealed, on any school campuses or facility under the purview of the Guam Department of Education. The exception would be police and other peace officers that are summoned to the campuses to deal with requests for assistance and various emergencies. If the intent of the initial plan for the school resource officers in wearing weapons is to secure federal funds by putting armed officers in our schools full-time, then it will not serve the intended purpose of providing a safe environment for our students. The SROs should be positive role models for our students and not necessarily enforcers armed with a loaded weapon. And I say this as an educator, that I believe that having loaded weapons on campuses is an intimidating phenomenon. Simply put, guns have no place in our school system. Aside from the obvious potential liability, there will be an increased responsibility placed on our school administrators. Principals will now have to add to their already exhaustive lists of things to do, training and policing the SROs who are on their campuses because of the wearing of the gun. Again, I want to reiterate, I support the school resource officer program, but minus the deadly weapons. SROs should better serve our student population by building positive relationships with the students and assisting them and respecting the law. I do not believe that our schools on Guam have reached a level of risk where deadly weapons are an essential element in our daily school activities and on our school campuses. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. So we have Major Fred Charcliff from GPD who would like to testify, and Phil Tidinko from the Attorney General's Office also who is here to testify. So could you please, both gentlemen, come forward? And when you speak into the microphone phone, please state your name, who you represent, and if you are in support or against Bill Number 392. So we'll start with you, Major.
Good afternoon, Speaker, Senators. My name is Major Fred Charcliff. I'm the Investigations Bureau Chief for the Guam Police Department. I'm here to represent our chief. He's tied up at the moment in another important meeting. However, I will be speaking on behalf of the Chief of Police, but I will also be testifying on my portion of this particular bill. I think you all have copies of his written testimony. And what I will do is I'm just going to highlight the major points, no pun intended, of course. And I'm just going to indicate that we are, or the department is, in support of the bill. However, there are some portions of it that I guess the chief mentioned in his letter, and it mentions that the clarification must be made in regards to the definition of dangerous weapons, specifically contraband and deadly and destructive weapons. And again, I think, like you mentioned earlier, Speaker, that since we will probably be having some additional meetings, and that probably we can address that, that'll be the form for that. Again, it's because I've seen it in my tenure, I think most of you that have worked in the schools, that a pencil can be a dangerous weapon. So, and I think, like I said, those things will be addressed. I think, and that's the main portion here that the chief wants to, I guess in summary, is that we need to sit down, have those discussions, and really determine what is going to be considered a dangerous weapon. Because a pencil, a ruler, you know, could be classified as that. And again, I've seen it where a student got poked in the eye, and I had to confine a minor for aggravated assault only because the student sustained an injury where, had to have some stitches and things like that. So that's pretty much the chief's, where the chief stands or where he stands on the bill, if he's in support of it. However, with that particular area, we need, and I think, like I mentioned, we should be able to discuss it in the future forums. Okay, so now my part, you know, from a police perspective and in my professional opinion from being a police officer for 27 years, and that's again, will be discussed further in these forums, is that I'm kind of, there's some issues there where it says that it's only when we're called for assistance or emergencies. I think Senator Guthertz, Senator Palacios, you're aware of that. A police officer is not on duty eight to five or two to 10. So even when I'm off and I go to my children's plays or my grandson's programs, I do carry my weapon, concealed, of course. But again, those are things that will be discussed because if that wasn't going to be the case, you wouldn't have any future markups, I would have said there are some changes that would be need to made into the bill. And only because of those. Understand the intent and why, like you said, to have future discussions, but again, it's very, it's vitally important, I'm even sitting here with my weapon, so it's vitally important that as police officers, that we do not lose that authority to carry our weapons, literally, because our department mandates that we carry weapons and identifications, and like I said, and it's something that we need to do in order for us to enforce the laws here in the territory of Guam. So again, that was just my only concern, but I think, and I'll probably participate in that, since I represent the chief, I'll be his rep on the future forums regarding this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And this really is an opportune time to get this dialogue going, this roundtable going, because the Vice Speaker and I are taking the lead here even for our own legislative building to prohibit any firearms being brought, not just to the session hall, but in the facilities such as the public hearing. And the need also to continue this dialogue because although the Senator and the bill is addressing Chapter 14 with a new chapter, Chapter 71 of the Gun-Free School Zone Act also speaks to this issue, and it has the exemptions also listed, but it also describes probation officers versus SROs.
Right.
So there's a lot here definitely that needs to be addressed. So I think this is a good time. So we definitely will be in touch with you and with the chief as well. So thank you for your testimony. The Attorney General, Phil Tidinko?
Good afternoon. Happy New Year, Speaker, Guam Pat, and Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Drew Gutherson, Senator Abini, Senator Palacios, Senator Tony Hadda, Senator Yamashita, Senator Silva Tyron. Phil Tidinko, Chief Deputy Attorney General, behalf of Attorney General Leonardo Rapadas. We thank you for this opportunity. First, of course, we support the intent of any legislation that strives to ensure the or improve the safety of our campuses and of our school facilities. So we thank the good Senator for wanting to do that and having that intent. Secondly, the benefit here, of course, the SRO continues the discussion, and we look forward to contributing to that roundtable. And so this is just further impetus for that. With regard to providing our input, it's more information, both technical and maybe historical. I guess with regard to the bill, I would just point out, and I even noticed that the Chief of Police pointed out, there is a gun-free zone law on the books that the 27th Guam Legislature put in, which is very comprehensive, very, very comprehensive. And it requires everything from the Department of Education, which is supposed to have posted on or before January of 2005 notices that it's a gun-free zone. That statute is very clear about their exemptions. It's very tight. It really, like if I were to ask, if you were to ask me for an amendment for your exception, I'd say follow the one that's in the gun-free zone, which basically says all peace officers are exempted because, like for example, the current language is based on request. You know, there are all kinds of circumstances under which law enforcement, armed or concealed or openly, need to be on campus with or without a request from DOE. If we're investigating, we don't necessarily need a request from them or do they necessarily need to know that we're investigating them. And plus, there are many, there are just community things that happen on campus, when you have the great people come out or the dog people come out, they all got to wear their guns, and they're mandated to do that. So I think the gun-free zone statute is sufficient. I think that, I think what this really does add, perhaps, and we might want to track it, if you simply want to make sure that it's in the statute concerning DOE, is to track the language and reference the gun-free zone law that's in 9GCA. Of course, the purpose of the gun-free zone law in 9GCA is also for the criminal sanctions and penalties and so forth, but it's very comprehensive there. I would suggest that if you're going to want to have a statute that addresses that, to make it consistent so that we don't have any inconsistencies in make it consistent so that we don't have any inconsistencies and provide defenses to people who violate the law under 9GCA, and they point to 17GCA as a way to create ambiguity or defense. Because if you pass this, I would use this as a defense. So if I was caught with a gun on campus, with the way it's written, so when we have the round table, we can still have this in 17GCA. We just have to make it reference and consistent to 9GCA, the Gun-Free Zone Act. So it's, I think that's the, probably the best way to go with this, is one recommendation. Secondly, with regard to the School Resource Officers, I can only tell you the AG experience with SROs. We have provided SRO, SRO programs usually came under the federal drug grant. I think the most recent SRO one is probably under the anti-bullying grant. But generally, they're required to be peace officers. Generally, they're required to be experienced and be armed. And our investigators, at one time, we had one assigned as an SRO floating between the campuses. And they do not only the education and community issues, but they're also there for purposes of investigating and being a peace officer that's accessible now. So I think that, and there's a lot of material, by the way, from the federal websites on SROs. They're essentially police officers, and I know that we, even on our books, we have laws that now allow retired police officers who have a lot of experience who could become School Resource Officers. And I think that's on our books, like been on the books a year or two ago. And the idea was to have experienced people who, you know, would have a lot of experience in both investigating as well as, you know, would probably think a lot more deliberately about when to react with firearms. So I wanted to put that, make that input in there, because I think the bill is a good start for, if you want to make sure you address it in 17GCA as it relates to DOE. But I wouldn't use the current language, like, because we have like things like contraband and destructive weapons. Those are, we already have definitions like deadly weapons, and if you had something in there that's not covered elsewhere, it'll just, that's just technically, it'll create some ambiguity. So that's basically our input. I think that this is a discussion that needs to be drilled down a little bit deeper when we go into the round table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tidinko. Senator Guthers, you have any questions?
Always.
Okay. Vice Speaker?
Couple of things. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for broaching the subject of our discussion last week about making this a gun-free zone also. For both of you, I mean, it's been a while since I retired from the court. And when I was there, which admittedly was over 10 years ago, I thought I remembered a practice where you guys had to offload your weapons outside before you went through the building. Are you allowed to walk around inside with your loaded weapons?
We have to unload. And again, and the reason for that, of course, is because there are court, you know, security officers there, the marshals who are armed. So it would behoove me to walk into a school campus, take out my weapon, and no, there's nobody else armed, and God forbid somebody walks in there with a, you know, 15-star shooter. Then we'd have some issue. But you're right, in the courts, and it still is, and that's nationwide. That's both, you know, the Superior Courts and the federal courts. You have to disarm. And I have no qualms about that, because you know, if you've got 10 or 12 marshals armed in there, I think it's a fairly safe place where I wouldn't need to carry one.
And I'm very thankful about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I would not be here today if we didn't have that rule.
Absolutely.
Because the only time that I was ever threatened in my courtroom to be shot was, unfortunately, by a police officer, who was irate about my ruling on his.
I remember.
You remember that?
I do. I'd have to pick him up and arrest him later. I was one of the investigators that picked him up.
So you understand my apprehension would be very, very, it was mild. I mean, I just have an abhorrence to guns in certain places.
Right.
On a completely different issue, as it relates to the SRO, and I'm glad, General Tidinko, that you're here, is that the issue of when you guys had an SRO in the school, or even if your discussion of all the SROs in the states being police officers, do you see a problem with a probation officer from the judiciary carrying a gun outside of the courthouse without a warrant for, if there was a riot at the school, would he be able to arrest anybody? Does he have color of authority without a warrant of arrest from the judge?
That's not an easy question based on that fact pattern, only because probation officers happen to be peace officers, and as peace officers, they're permitted to be, to have firearms and to bear firearms and...
But their ability to be able to arrest comes with them being able to carry with them a warrant, doesn't it?
I believe they can arrest their probationers without a warrant.
If there's a violation.
If there's a violation, if they, so I think...
But if he has 10 probationers in this high school, and one of the other 2,400 gets out of line, does he have the authority to arrest that child?
Yes, under the, what do you call, citizen's arrest, he can make the citizen's arrest statute in AGCA. But in terms of the color of, as a probation officer, usually his jurisdiction is restricted to his probationers or the pretrial detainees as it pertains to those who are under the auspices of the court. Now, I don't know exactly what the SROs that are coming out of the judiciaries are going to necessarily be able to do or not do. I'm not privy to that, but as you know, our statute allows for citizen's arrest, so arguably he could make that citizen's arrest there. But in terms of the color of his office, as a probation officer of a non-provationer, it would be difficult to justify.
But a citizen's arrest, I could also do a citizen's arrest, and so could any of these...
Well, but I just assumed that...
You brought up a really interesting question, I mean, point that I'd like to follow up on. Has the Attorney General's Office reviewed the memorandum of understanding or the agreement between GDOE and the Unified Judiciary as it relates to this program? Has it been approved by you guys? Have you reviewed it and approved it?
First question is, no, we have not reviewed it because we are not party to reviewing it. Secondly, because DOE has their own counsel, they can review that. Secondly, the judiciary is a separate branch...
Isn't she a special assistant attorney general?
Is a SAG, right. But that's for purposes of the procurement, for procurement law, she has a SAG appointment. But to answer your question, no, we're not reviewing it number two. We haven't been asked to review it. Number three, it's not necessarily illegal that we're not reviewing it, because they have counsel for DOE, and of course judiciary is a separate branch, and they have counsel, and they can enter into agreements like that.
Even if you haven't been asked to review the memorandum of understanding, has the office been asked to review the issue of the separation of the branches and whether or not the judiciary should be placing employees of the judiciary in an executive branch department?
Not to my knowledge, we haven't been asked.
Has your office been asked to provide a legal opinion as to whether or not, without a warrant, any of these school resource officers could be arresting non-provationers on, outside of the campus without a warrant?
No, we haven't been asked that question, but then again, the scope of the MOU may not necessarily allow or include that, so I don't know. But no, I have not been asked that. We have not been asked that.
With all the discussion and the brouhaha in the community over this, that your office has not seen fit to do some kind of proactive investigation or review of this issue? You're going to, I won't say, you haven't reviewed it? Or taken any action to review it?
We, I stand by the responses I gave you earlier, Senator, that we haven't been asked to review it, we haven't seen it yet. That doesn't mean it's not forthcoming or not. No, we have not been asked.
You haven't been asked, but my question is, have you taken the proactive position of reviewing it even without a question being posed to you from outside? Just because you've seen that a senator has introduced legislation, that there's been letters flying back and forth in the community, that there was almost a week's worth of talk show discussion and newspaper articles and newspaper editorials on the issue, your office has not seen fit to, at least preliminarily, do a review of this issue?
I can just say that there's been some discussion, but I'm not certain that I'm able to answer your question fully, that we've done a preliminary review of that. I know that there has been some discussion, and I suppose at this point, because it's my understanding that the SRO may not necessarily include actually investigating, they may actually just simply be there for purposes, if they see something else that requires an actual arrest, that they would be contacting the police officer. So again, that's the best response I can give to you at this time.
Okay, thank you. And that, maybe this is the best time for me to make my disclaimer. I fully support the issue, I mean, the concept of school resource officers. I would like to see one in every school, middle school. I would like to see guidance counselors, not academic counselors, but guidance counselors in every single one of the schools. Because I believe it's important, if not imperative, that some adult be floating around the campus, that these young people can trust, that they can go up to, and if they're aware of some drugs being traded on the campus, of some guns or other dangerous items being brought onto campus, any bullying or whatever, that they have an adult that they can trust that they can go to. I think it would make things so much easier and so much safer for everybody. I just wish we had that kind of money to do this. So I am fully in favor of the School Resource Officer Program and Concept. I am just not sure that it's necessary that they come in armed to the teeth with a Glock
Well, again, Vice Speaker, if the SROs, as I understand, and I assume are simply there for the community outreach and to take intel and all of that, and not necessarily for purposes of investigation, then I suppose it is workable without the weapons. So it'd be important to see what exactly is the scope of the SRO under the MOA. But again, I assume they do not necessarily, they don't necessarily have to be the same as the SROs of the past, like when we post one, or if a retired GPD officer was hired to be one. So, but your point is well taken, that the SRO is a good program, and, but I would tell you that SROs can be armed, and is a program that, across the nation where many of them are actually armed, and a lot of times they're in civilian wear, and they carry concealeds, and that's what our investigators did. So, thank you.
I went to the bullying conference, and I met the gentleman from Texas. And he talked about the fact that he was armed, but he also mentioned the fact that he had, I think, 17 to 20 years of experience on the police force and training. And so, I mean, there's a difference. And though I don't know these five individuals that were initially selected as the SROs, just looking at them and the background that they have, I think they would make excellent role models and mentors in the schools, that if I was a high school student, I would be willing to talk to one of them. A baseball star, a football star, they're all, you know, they'd be people that you'd want to talk to in the event that you needed something. So the selection process was excellent. I'm just not sure what the training process was and the experience. And without that experience, guns, and we've had too many accidents in the past, even with some experienced officers and probation officers. So I just am very wary of it. And I'll save the rest of my part of, and I apologize for having you be my whipping board today, because unfortunately, GDOE and the judiciary saw fit to not come today, which just, never mind, I won't even say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'm going to go ahead then and put in, the committee will put in the request that the AG then gets itself involved by reviewing that MOU. I did send a letter to the chief justice actually asking for a copy to be able to review it, because in, you know, my research as well, is that the SROs are, they vary from state to state. And at least initially in our discussion, when we brought it up in the round table, that nothing was ever mentioned that the SROs were going to carry guns. We did find out that they were hired as probation officers, and I guess that's where the confusion is, or the fact that everyone is saying that they are peace officers, because as probation officers, and based on the definition and AGCA Chapter 5, on the definition of peace officers, it includes probation officers. But depending on what you're going to describe as the duties and responsibilities of SROs, then they may not be probation officers. Some of them, in the descriptions in other states, are actually acting as, as if though they were assistant principals. And that could be a problem as well for the Department of Education, if somebody's going to be an assistant principal when a school already has two, three, or four assistant principals. So there's going to be some overlapping here, and that's the reason why we wanted to get this discussion going. But I won't go into that, because I know that the senator here, who has oversight of public safety, has that concern. But there's a question I have, however, is that when you say peace officers in the definition, who can carry weapons, what is your position, because we say it all the time, about even mayors and vice-mayors carrying weapons?
Well, I'm not, I don't recall what the policy or purpose of the original inclusion of those folks was, so I'm unable to articulate why the legislature passed, decided to include mayors. You know, I'm getting this vague tickling in my brain about something about mayors giving tickets and things of that sort, which may have, completely unrelated to firearms, caused them to be put in the peace officer. So there's, it was one of those funky things that occurred in the law. But please don't quote me on that.
No, and you're right. And this is something that I know we're going to really need to look at as well, because there was another legislation that was passed that allows now even entomologists to be like peace officers. And if you say that, then do they then carry guns? Should they also then carry guns?
Yeah, I thought that was a person who had two roles. I think he was actually a customs officer, and he just also happened to be an expert entomologist, kind of like if you have a crime scene...
No, this is for the Department of Agriculture. No, this is for the Department of Agriculture, so it's...
Right, and agriculture actually has conservation officer, I, who are, who also happen to be peace officers, so you could wear two hats and, and, and kind of like GPD, there are sometimes, if, if some of the forensic people there in crime lab would happen to be peace officers too, and then, because sometimes a, a uniform officer does crime lab work and decides that's all they want to do, I don't want to be out in the field or for whatever, because he's got skills, and so he has expertise and, and they might have just, that, that could have been sort of a little writer that got in there somehow. I, I don't know, I, I'd, we'd have to look it up.
All right, thank you, Senator Pelashis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, of course, I, I support the, the bill very, very much, and in fact, you know, I, I support the idea of the SRO, it's just that it, as far as I'm concerned, they should be employees of DOE. They should not be borrowed employees from the judiciary over to DOE, and I, I raised that issue about three months ago, you know, in a roundtable discussion under the committee, Madam Chair, when it was brought to light that, that actually five probation officers would be assigned there, and I just went through the budget of the judiciary requesting for additional positions, and here you have five full-time positions assigned over to DOE to do DOE's job. And at, at any rate, anybody, I mean, I don't support arming. I think the SROs is really more just monitoring and service eyes and ears, but really we have DOE, a GPD with a tactical team, you have DOC with a tactical team. What I'd like to see really is a trained SRO with maybe some principle on the first responder. What do they do when threats come in from outside? Where do they, how do they put up a, a safety net for the students? Who will call the police? Where do they assemble? They, three years ago, Madam Chair, I asked DOE for some kind to develop policy and procedure on first response for issues like that, and this is at a time when all that, that shooting in the States. And I doubt, and perhaps your committee, Madam Speaker, can request one more time, I can do a follow-up, where is the, what, that's what you need, you need to know what to do when these things come down. They don't know what to do, they don't know when to go, I mean, is there a liaison, a GPD established right now with DOE for protocol when there's an emergency or a shooting? Is there anything?
We don't have necessarily a established liaison?
No, no, with them, is that an honest, a prior...
Here's, here's how, here's how we deal with DOE, when you talk about first responders, that Bruce Williams is their safety officer, so, and they've, they've come up with their response plans, their oh hazards plans and response to emergencies, so they've consulted with us, and, because it, it can involve my bureau, which is the investigation side, it could involve Major Ryan's bureau, which is the operation, so depending on which part of his plan that he's putting together, we've consulted, so the answer is yes, we do liaise with them, but because remember, the department is not just one thing. I have subject matter experts in my bureau, and, and in the other bureaus, they have their subject manager, so depending on what that part of his response plan is going to entail is who we send, because we do have, and you know, we've got people that are trained in different areas, the SWAT aspect. I'll be honest with you, I've never been assigned to SWAT other than overseeing it as a captain, but the tactical guy, I would get a sergeant that I know very well, Sergeant Chukwu, he would be the first guy to say, go meet with Bruce Williams and tell him what your tactical response is going to be. So we do, but does, do we have somebody says you will be the liaison for, no, no we don't.
There's no pre-plan, there's no plan right now that if something goes wrong, everybody knows what to do to go to the school and save the students?
Yes, we do, sir.
With, with DOE?
Well...
You, you have to do...
As far as DOE, what they're going to do to respond, I mean, that's, you know, what they need, you know, to work on, and we've worked with them, but for us to respond, yes. We do have operations plans that we respond to, you know, you know, different scenarios, and it's pretty much general, but all the precinct commanders, as well as the captains and the majors are familiar, because I started working with that as a lieutenant, and even now the lieutenants and the captains work with those things. So, yes, I can't speak for DOE side of the house, but I know I've spoken with Bruce on numerous occasions regarding certain response plans like an oh hazards, you know, response or, you know, a C-Burney, which is hazardous material response, so we have, like I said, worked with DOE. Now, have I actually seen their, their plan? No, I have not.
Actually, Major, what I'm interested in is, is their plan, not GPD's plan, actually, and I, at any rate, considering, this is, this is what I want to present to you. Considering, of course, the judiciary, I know they have a, a tactical force or tactical team, they call it, specialized, just like the, the SWAT team of GPD, they have, DOC, I know they have. Now, considering all these resources, highly trained law enforcement, do you think that the SRO not being armed, would that diminish their value, their usefulness in terms of protecting the students and the, the school? Because you're still going to get involved one way or the other at first, at first hand, that there's an, there's an issue.
Thirty years ago, Senator, when I was going to, you know, elementary and middle school, I probably say, no, in this day and age, I think we all remember Columbine High School. We've had a couple of universities had shots, so what am I saying? I would hate for us, unless use this hypothetical, I'm going to give you a worst case scenario, I'm in that school, I'm at my grandson's school at Emiliohan, and the law passed, hey, you can't carry firearm. I got to take my firearm, put it in the compartment, lock it, unload it, separate ammo and stuff. Columbine High School appears in Guam, I cannot use my weapon. I'm not saying it's, the resource officer should be armed or not armed, that needs to be discussed further, like we mentioned. I cannot, and even my wife will tell you this, when I leave the house and I forget my firearm, it's like, I don't care how late we're going to be, we go back home.
I just, I just don't support arming any, any employee of DOE for the purpose of protection, because there's law enforcement to do that.
And that's, that's something we can discuss, Senator, and I think it needs to be discussed.
And I think the SRO, the government arrangement, technically, they are, they are rather, they, they, they have become...
Right.
By, by assignment from judiciary to them, they've become agents of DOE.
Right.
And in that fashion, then I don't support them being armed.
And I think that's where, like we said, and the crossing, the disconnect.
But if they're going to use this thing that, well, by title, by position, we are probation officers, but we function as a SRO, but arm us as profession, as probation officer, I don't buy that, because they, they technically become employees of DOE, and to me, there are other highly trained response officers that will take care of that problem in, in less than, in less than a five minutes, in my opinion. And for, for that reason, there, there are alternatives to, to providing safety and security in, in this high risk, or rather, very volatile situation, should it come down, others have to take care of that, GPD has to take care of that, and the other SWAT team, but I don't think the SRO carrying a gun would, would do much when that thing comes down.
And, and I'm, I'm going to speak from a professional standpoint, is that I don't want to say yes or no, and only because, I mean, here in Guam, it's, we can say, yeah, SROs are armed nationwide and stuff, but Guam's totally different area. Can it work? Maybe. I, I'm just saying it needs to be discussed, and I think when we get to that point on the future roundtable discussions, I think that's where we hash out now whether is it reasonable or is it not. I, and we're, we're both officers, we, we can say yes or no right now, but you know what? Excuse my French, but when the F, you know, hits the, you know, the fan, then we say, maybe we should or maybe we shouldn't, but I think the future discussions with, you know, the committee as well as the folks from DOE, and like you said, the judiciary as well as the AG's office, I think we can hammer out something that, and like the, the Attorney General said, is that we already got a bill that's in place, that's, that's very, you know, what you call that, detailed, and it really, this, all this does, and if you look at the chief's memo or the letter, it says it mirrors it, it really does, with the exception of the dangerous weapons, so, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to improve on that person. And that SRO, I think, is the key part here, whether we arm or we don't arm, I mean, is it just a title that maybe we need to change? I don't know, but those are discussions, my Senator, that I'm saying, do, do we need to change that SRO, say, what you call the probation officers? I don't know, I mean...
I, I think the, the most beneficial for the students in terms of security is advanced knowledge of what to do, how to do it, the procedures and other things.
Absolutely.
I think that, that, that provides more safe, more safety than really a firearms with, you know, just, just marginally trained people to respond, you know, that's my opinion.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Tonya, any questions or comments? Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you all for being here. I, I totally agree, I'm very happy, Madam Speaker, Senator Pelashis and the Vice Speaker are going to be calling roundtables. I totally agree that the communication needs to happen, I'm, there's got to be a good reason that the Department of Education is not here, as well as the judiciary is not here, those are key stakeholders that have to lend to this conversation, and maybe they heard there's going to be roundtables, so they'll wait until then, but certainly, I'm real concerned about the lack of leadership from the DOE side. There have been many conversations, but it didn't go, it, it wasn't horizontal and it wasn't vertical. There were groups of folks who were at those, at that table, and, and the folks that were at the table are very committed to this program. You talk to them, they're the school leaders, they're the folks who got this movement, who got the grants going, they're so committed to this, they're real believers in it. What we didn't do is we didn't talk to everybody who needed to be spoken with. So for me, there was, there was just a lack of organizational leadership and an incredible lack of communication, and I'm, I'm really glad that throughout our island community, we're understanding the importance of this, and so, but I think it falls on DOE. I think they need to be able to say, this is what we want to do to strengthen the safety and security of our island community, of our school campuses, and this is what we want to do. So I very much look forward to the roundtable conversations, and I'm glad that you will be there, both of you, then. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome. Senator Manasewataya, Senator Samabini, any more last questions to be asked? None? Well, I want to thank you gentlemen for coming in and testifying, and as Senator Yamashita said, the two most critical departments or agencies or branches are not here, so the dialogue, definitely the roundtable will be scheduled as soon as possible.
Madam Speaker, can I ask a question?
Oh, so sorry, yes.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask if you had any information as to why the Department of Education and the judiciary are not represented here, since they are the originators of this plan, we would have hoped that they would have shared their perspectives with us?
Well, I, I actually contacted both, specifically invited, you know, individuals, and they said they were just going to listen, because they're still right now drafting the MOU, so it's nothing as official yet, and I know that Chairman West here earlier and had to leave, so I guess everyone's listening, wanting to know what the two critical departments have to say, GPD and the Attorney General's Office and the legislature, so that, that now, I guess, just taking the middle road for now until the legislature decides. I do know that the board did say, I was visited by the board, and they were saying that since legislation was introduced and since the court was not going to make a decision, the board were not going to set the policy, they said that it would now be the responsibility of the legislature to pass legislation prohibiting the carrying of weapons into the campus.
Madam Chair, even though this is something that would really be under the purview of the board, under its authorities under law, to establish policy for the schools, they have decided that they want us to do it, is that correct? Is that what you're saying, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I would like to just say something, since I sponsored this bill. My purpose was to get discussion going, and I think it certainly has done that. The real decision, frankly, on whether the school resource officers should be armed should be a community decision. We should hear from the parents, we should hear from the faculty and staff, and even the administrators at the school. That would be all the schools, the public schools, in fact, and I was, I would have hoped, Madam Speaker, that the school board would have arranged for that, since they, they're the policy body for the school system. If they want to defer to us, we can do this, but I would hope that we would have an opportunity for parents to come in and participate in the roundtable, and other interested stakeholders, so we can hear from them. If we're going to do this, let's really do it right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. It is now three thirty. This concludes the public hearing for the confirmation of Dr. John Solis and the, on Bill Number 392. If there's anyone who would like to submit testimonies, please feel free to send it to judy, speaker@judiwanpad.com, you can email it to me, you can also fax it to the office at four seven two three five nine, I mean, eight zero, eight nine, and you can drop it off here at the mailroom or address it to one fifty-five Hester Street at Tagana, Guam. So this concludes then, and fulfills the, the requirement of having public hearings, and this, this committee is adjourned.